John Steffel here, Dr. Tom Seaworth, hopefully he's available. He's not here at the time. And Annie Hoegum, who's here today?
Here.
Here. With that, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming, it's good to see you here. I'll start with a motion to adjutant.
So moved.
Second by Amy, Jennifer, second by Amy. Any further discussion? John O'Leary, signature by Sanai.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. We have a few recognitions tonight. Jen Lapant for her help in creating the district branding guide. I believe she's here tonight. Ellen Shermer for the years of holiday tea put on by Detroit Lakes Public Schools, Legion. Yeah, by the Legion, which ended like very before COVID, right out of town, so.
Yep, you now have enough people.
Right. Thank her for that. Jen Barberd for work as Detroit Lakes Middle School Student Council Advisor.
Stand up Jen, so we can.
And for here, I would like to present you with a certificate, if you want to come up. Thank you very much, and I don't know if we have a couple of words to say, or not?
What do you do Jen?
I have worked on really great middle schools that have lots of creative ideas, and they have a lot of stuff planned for December, so we're partnering with the museum to do the Lego Letgo for Laidos for the Veterans Day. That'll be awesome, we just got that all the books this, in the next week, which is like one of my very favorite things, and we are starting tomorrow with my 12 days of celebrations of the funeral of the birth, so we got to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Josh Homang and Rob Ullit for their work on the Veterans Day program. Is Rob here or not?
I don't know, Mr. Elliott's here. I think he's at Rafflin's.
Okay, and then I will present you. You guys did a great job. Do you want to give him this to the others?
Oh yeah.
You'll see him. You'll see him. Thank you very much Josh, you did a great job. Well, it's ended, and I know you're busy running around, and between that and MC and stuff.
Yep, I got the easy job, I just want to say that, Mr. Elliott, we've been doing this for a long time in our social studies department, so we have lots of people involved in that. I just had to steer the ship and make coffee, which I was semi-successful at. But it's pretty cool, because my brother-in-law's currently deployed and is commander of the LEP Air Force Base, so I have him do a little thing for the kids. And I don't know if you're like soccer, or an adult family, but over at his base doing a bunch of different stuff this month with the recognizing and all that area and stuff. Super cool, like I said, not just me, but of course, awesome stuff to do.
Thank you very much. Okay, we had a couple of presentations scheduled. Oh, that's right, we got to do fall sports recognitions.
Fall activities recognitions here. Tennis, Mid-State All-Conference, Anna Askelson and Mariana Lighthizer. Honorable mention Abby Noel, Megan Lundie, and Maya Leclaire and Jayden Marsill. Boys Soccer, All-Conference, Evan Thomas, Kayden Reeve, Noah Meyer, Noah Wright, Reber, and Avery Young. Avery Young was also named the Minnesota State Soccer Coaches Association All-State Team. I believe he's only the second player in our 26 years of soccer that's been named in that team. And Justin Whitebaker was named the Second Coach of the Year. Girls Soccer, now I should note that Justin recently resigned after 26 years as our soccer coach to accept a position in the West with nature, so that's going to be a tough one to replace somebody that's been here that long. Girls Soccer, Pine and Prairie, All-Conference, Clara Lundmark, Ellie Betcher, Kayden Sweeters and Kayden King, honorable mention Olivia Peacefield and Ivy Jeffrey. Section Assistant Coach of the Year, Maddie Weber, that's the second year in a row or one of our assistants has been the Assistant Coach of the Year in the section. Swimming, we had three All-Conference, Faith Ham, Maren Westrom, Marion Martin, honorable mention Lynn Roxton, Riley Wentz, Emily Peterson. Section AK Swimmer of the Year, Faith Ham, just realized they did not update this after the state meet. We had our four-by-two-hundred relay that advanced to the state, that was Riley Wentz, Emily Peterson, Faith Ham, and Maren Westrom. And Hope Ham advanced in the diving, she did not place. Our relay did not make the final, but Faith Ham did make the consolation final in 200-meter free. Cross-Country, All-Conference, Julia Steffel, honorable mention. This is boys and girls mix, we have Brady Francis for the boys and Sadie Johnson for the girls as honorable mention. Football, Academic Goal Team by the Minnesota Football Coaches Association. Brock Okusen was named to the Minnesota Football Coaches All-State Academic Team. Academic All-District, Logan Hillby, Kate Jackson, Mason Carrier, Ethan Carrier, Tyson Elliott. Hunter Court, Jack Pace, Reese Orman, Ethan Wall, Cody Barton, Brett Winter, Nick Tovkin, Tommy Suker, Tyler Ostley, Tyler Stenzgard, Cale MacArthur, Blake Grant, Will Martin, Alan Tierse, Charlie Zock, Ryan Peterson, Adrian Holt, Ryan Brinkman, Brad Showblum, Reese Winter, Tyler House, Brock Okusen, Riley Gusslaw, Connor Zamzal, and Nick Bluebolts. At All-District Football, Ethan Carrier, Brock Okusen, Mason Carrier, Isaac Caribou. All-District Honorable Mention, Henry D., Charlie Koway, and Will Martin. Nick Bluebolts was named the Midwest District Red Specialist of the Year for kickers and punters, kick returners. Volleyball, Jalen Gunderson and Nathan Jones were All-Conference. Grace Gunderson, Sadie Stroing were All-Conference Honorable Mention. Grace Gunderson was also named to the All-Tournament Team at the state tournament, and the Lakers finished fifth in the state tournament. And Lindsay Manchikari was named Section Coach of the Year for Section 8, or 3A. Musical, a bunch of awards here, Hennepin Theater Trust Spotlight Honors. What that is, there's a group of evaluators come out and watch our performances, and then they make recommendations or evaluations of the performance. We have been invited to perform next summer at their Spotlight, what do they call it, Festival?
Showcase.
Showcase, there you go. But Achievement, we're honorable mention for achievement in musical theater. Outstanding grading in overall production, honorable mention overall performance, honorable mention vocal performance, outstanding dance performance, outstanding for run-through, I assume that's the stage crew?
Yeah.
Outstanding performance in a leading role, Annie Hoegum. Honorable mention, performance in a leading role, Matthew Morrison. Honorable mention, performance in a leading role, Andrew Nun. Outstanding in technical leadership, which is hair and makeup, J.C. Paverdam. And evaluator shout-outs to other great performances by Ethan Henderson, Neil Trowbridge, Cameron Lopens, Rachel Wagner, and Peyton Lorenz. So awesome all the way through the fall, we have some great honors for tons and tons of it, which is really neat to see.
Thank you, Ross. We need to show our appreciation and give some accolades to our Laker athletes and, you know, playing or other activities or performance, so good job. Rob, you came in, I see.
Yeah, I got lost on the way.
Anyway, we are recognizing you and Josh for your work on Veterans Day program. You got a few words to say, like anything about today or anything?
Well, I can say that it was a huge effort from our school, you know, and we just had so many hands in on this one that it just, you know, that's the way it works over there. Our social studies department, we just got some great folks that dove in and did an awful lot of work, so that was a part of it. You know, I've done this long enough, where we go. So, you know, Rachel Johnson, Anna Mosier, Casey Bernstein, Eric Karas, Kelly Melchoe, we all just kind of divided things up, and they all just did just a great, great job. Some great ideas from both, we even brought in a pinch hitter, Kerry Ider came in and helped us out with the breakfast that morning and such, but to give more understanding how it's a school situation here. You know, we have Laker Live, Mary Quayback and things, they took care of running some video workforce and things to prep the kids for that particular activity. Central Market, obviously, outside the school, they did a lot of donating to help us out. Tim Seaworth with our great band and things, did some things, obviously there. Nathan Thielen with the Laker singers were there. Sarah Williams down at the culinary area, boy, they whipped up some egg bake that was pretty good. Josh Drew in the oven the next day. I was pretty sure it was Kate's cook, but I didn't know about the cook, so we made her there. Janelle down at the FFA wing, the FFA kids came down and did the serving and things for us and such. We had our student ambassador groups with Aaron Swenson, where the liaisons of the veterans got there, they took them to where they needed to be, and certainly our student council with Bob House also dove in as well. And of course, we have Josh, who's certainly a big advocate of community involvement and things along the way. So you can see it was just a great school effort and things, so there's a lot of people that I think should get a congratulations on this whole thing, so.
Kind of between the programs, and they would very appreciate it, the egg bake, Josh. That was good, they really appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, I apologize for being late, I went to the address listed on the agenda.
Glad to hear.
There's a big parade going on. So I apologize.
No problem. I don't believe we have any comments or requests from visitors. So moving on to program presentations, as I said earlier, we had two scheduled, but Joe Curry came up sick, so that leads us to Steve Mosier from the Chemical Health Committee. I was going to give a report on that, we had one here two weeks ago, but I thought what's better than to have Steve come in and introduce himself to the rest of the board, probably, a lot of, I haven't met him yet. So with that, I'll call on you to give your presentation.
All right. Do you want me to come up here?
Sure.
Phone in, or? Seat right here.
Yeah, I think we'll check to see if that mic's on.
That's the name. They use the busted mic stand here, I see.
Jason Brogan.
We'll make it work. My name's Steve Moser, I'm the Chemical Health Coordinator for the district. Like Mr. Steffel said, he had met with me last week, I think it was, and had invited me to be here, so I got a little script, just so I don't take both mine and Joe's time tonight. I'll stay on point there. But if anyone has any questions, anything like that, as I know, be sure to stop me and let me know, so. Hello, and thank you for your time tonight, allowing me to be here to speak on behalf of the district and Community Advisory Committee. To begin, one of the main questions pertaining to this group is, why do we have it? What purpose does it serve? Well, unfortunately, we do have chemical use in the school district, we have chemical use in the community. Lastly, though, we need to acknowledge that there's more that we can do to support others in combating chemical use by providing resources and education to students and families, by creating involvement opportunities for local stakeholders, and by utilizing a collaborative approach to reducing chemical consumption in our area with help of local, state, and federal systems. The goals of the advisory committee are simple: to influence those to make better choices, to educate those who lack the knowledge, I like this one, to celebrate those who make positive choices already, and to help every kid live a healthy life. Currently, the committee's membership is comprised of, it being the district, school district and advisory committee, there's plenty of school district personnel on there. We have the superintendent, school board representation, building administration representation from all three levels, our legs and activities director, counselors, teachers, other staff, and our American Indian liaison. From Becker County Human Services, we have two other social workers from the county who deal directly with many of the families hit hardest by chemical use. From Becker County Attorney's Office, we have an assistant attorney for juvenile court. From juvenile probation, we have a probation officer for juvenile supervision. Detroit Lakes Public and Community Health, we have the Community Health Specialist, that's on board. From Ascension Health, we have some medical care workers. Law enforcement, our school resource officers included. I've also sent invites to both Chief Taz and Sheriff Landrake. And our local counseling centers, so we have both the mental health and addictions counselor represented from Lakes Counseling and Daystar Treatment. So, everything together so far, we have 25 individual members, we're hoping to grow that as we go. We used our first meeting on November 1st last month to better organize and coordinate our plans for the year. We dedicated, we decided that the group should be dedicated to being data-driven, outcome-focused, and intentional on impacting our main priorities. In addition to making a mindset that small changes lead to bigger results later on. Utilizing several sources of information, including Google Forms, our Minnesota students survey data, we showed to concentrate our efforts on five specific areas, and by our definition, kind of the main ones we're running to within the Detroit Lakes community. And they are, kind of in descending priority, alcohol use by minors. The mentality that it's not a big deal, that's kind of a big one that we run into, or at least that I've run into so far, is that it's not a big deal mentality. Third would be THC and marijuana use. Second was the accessibility within the community, so just the drug accessibility for minors in the community. And the first one, and I'm sure my administrators would agree with this one, nicotine and vaping use. So that one has been very prevalent thus far. So within the group, what's happening now? So, we had our first meeting, we've only had one meeting so far, but we've already had some really big impacts already. We formed, kind of the big thing, the big takeaway was, we formed subcommittees, so these are teams tasked with focusing their energies and resources towards more specific areas of chemical health within the school or community. And we have three subgroups that kind of came out of that. First one being chemical use within the schools, so that's going to look at vaping, alcohol use, THC, et cetera, and what we can do about it. The second one will be family engagement, how do we connect with parents and guardians better, especially the most challenging families to connect with? And then the third group was community awareness and education. So let's get the word out and start changing the narrative on chemical use. The final process from that first meeting is, the membership opportunities with the community are always open, and we are always welcome to new members, and since that first meeting, we've added three to our next meeting, so always looking for new members too. What's happening soon, okay, this is where it gets exciting. So there are a couple of new projects that we're working on in addition to building that membership base. So just finding more local resources that are there, that we may not have found on our own, that's been kind of a big connection that was made at our first meeting. Reporting from our subgroups, that's going to be a big part of our next meeting, on the ideas that they have, what they found, what directions they kind of want to go. We have an upcoming meeting with our regional coordinator from the Minnesota Prevention Resource Center on coalition building, and funding, and engagement. We're also working with Public Health on grant funding opportunities and initiatives. Like they have the Bureau of Justice and a planning and implementation grant. The Bureau of Justice one's going to be big here, I'll talk about that in a second. Public Health has already been an incredible wealth of information, and I'd like to send a special shout-out to Cheryl Walters, she's been really, really great. But we have Mr. Steffel to thank for being at our first meeting, so appreciate that. I've met with Mr. Jason McCoy, he's the Tobacco Prevention Coordinator for Becker County, and he's a member of the Partnership for a Health Coalition out of the FM area. He helps with possible tobacco vaping and nicotine resources, and he's going to send me pretty much everything that he can, so I'll be getting that information out to students, to families, to schools, putting in the newsletter as soon as I can. One thing that's really cool is we have the opportunity, because of Public Health and the Bureau for Justice Grant, the opportunity for an organization called Change the Outcome. So they're a Minnesota-based advocacy group, focused on providing students with information and education on opioid use, unidentified narcotics use, and emerging drug trends in student populations. So utilizing, what they'll do is they'll come in and they have a video documentary that students will watch beforehand, then they'll have a large group presentation and a panel discussion that's led by Change the Outcome leaders, and then they'll actually have several students who will do kind of a question and answer and activity, and those students themselves are either in active recovery or who have completed recovery. So it's one of those things where it's kind of peer-to-peer action, where students will be learning experiences from other students, which is really, really cool. And this opportunity will be free for the high school due to that Bureau of Justice grant, so anytime we can do something for free, that's a good thing. We're going to connect with other coalition leads. For example, on the Regional Prevention Center website, there was a contact for Becca Zwannner, who's the Substance Abuse Coordinator for Polk County, and one thing that she did that was really great within her county was, she created like a postcard system that would send information home to families, because what they found is, when they surveyed, you know, parents having that conversation with students at home, why wasn't it happening to a degree we would like to see it, and the idea back is, parents just weren't informed enough that, on the topic that they need to be, whether it be THC, nicotine, alcohol, they just wanted more of that information and a more platform to begin on. So that's what Becca and her team did, was she set a series of postcards home. I believe there were four of them, where they do like an intro card, and the second would be consequences and information, then the third one would be identification, the fourth one being, okay, here's how to have that conversation now that you're better informed. So that would be something that would be really, really interesting to see, kind of build on that. Another one that we have is a program called Hidden in Plain Sight. So this one you may be familiar of, it actually started out of Winona County, so basically it's a visual exhibition where a group will come in, they can either come to a high school, you know, wherever we're having an event, what they do is they essentially set up like a mock bedroom, but then they hide it with a bunch of things and other things that parents just don't know how to recognize. And then it's, again, it's an educational experience for parents to come in and begin to learn, oh, this is what I, these are the warning signs, this is what I need to look for. Just because, again, so much of it isn't that community members, parents, guardians, they don't want to deal with it, it's they don't know what it is when they see it. So that's something else that we're going to look at. And then more opportunities will be available as connections and collaborations continue to build. Another idea that we had was to connect with the business community, to provide resources and supports options for employees. The Chamber of Commerce would potentially be a good resource for this process. I was able to view a webinar on substance abuse prevention for employees last week that would contribute to less use, less abuse in the community, and within the home unit. We may want to direct our efforts towards students, but we also need to keep in mind that students' environments is one of the most important and impactful elements in their development. Keeping everyone at home healthy would only benefit our students. So there's lots going on and lots more to look forward to as the committee continues to gain momentum and strength. I'd like to take a moment to thank everyone who has been a contributor to the committee thus far, and my hope is that we'll see measurable progress and success in a short period of time. Remember that small changes lead to big results later on, and it's our intention to make Detroit Lakes, both the schools and the community, safer, better, healthier place to be. Do you have any questions for me?
Love your enthusiasm.
Yeah.
That's wonderful, I appreciate it. It's great to have this up, I think, running, I'm so glad you're here on the board. Yeah, you've done a lot of running.
Like it had been mentioned before, it's a group thing, it's a collective thing, for sure, Mr. Elliott. I mentioned where the more we can connect with the resources, because so many of these things are happening already in the community that if we don't know about it, we can't utilize them, so like I said, just kind of that gaining momentum thing, the more people we get involved. Yeah, it is exciting, so it is one of those things where, maybe the topic is not the greatest tactic, but I mean, there are things that we're going to have, that we can do to make it better, so. Yeah, any other questions?
Well, that was a great question.
John, hold on.
Oh, good.
One of the things that is a concern is the rhetoric surrounding and the upcoming push to legalize recreational marijuana. Has your committee looked at that and the problems that that has created in other states, and is there anything that we can do as educators to try and get a message back to our elected officials as to they should probably reconsider what might wise or undermine that may be?
Yeah.
And how that may affect what you're trying to do?
Absolutely, I mean, that's a great question. Actually, before moving to Detroit Lakes, I spent the last eight years out in Oregon, where it is recreationally decriminalized for those not employed in a federal position. So it did necessarily create a situation where, you know, there's just, just the accessibility when the dispensaries are there, things like that. It definitely becomes more accessible for students. At this point, though, I mean, with the medical side being taken care of, I, I mean, it would be hard to say if it would force students towards a different direction, or if it would just become, I know just THC in general, especially with the vaping, we see that most students aren't necessarily smoking as much as they are anymore. I don't necessarily want to like overgeneralize like cigarettes versus marijuana and things like that, too. What I would be maybe more cautious for from my direction is seeing the THC oils and the things like that come up with like the vape cartridges and things like that. Because I believe at this point, there, it's either being pushed through, or like the THC gummies are being legalized at this point, too. And that's kind of the first step towards kind of total acceptance of these kind of things. But yeah, I kind of, it's hard for me not to go back to that, it's not a big deal mentality, which that would be even more harder to overcome once it's legal. Right now, it's already seen as, it's, you know, it's just, like, it's not that big of a deal.
But it says it isn't a big deal, has not read.
No, no, not at all, and especially with just the properties of it and.
Yeah, we're not, I just wanted to see if that's, if that's something that you see on the horizon as another concern for our students, and, you know, whether or not we as educators can weigh in, I'm afraid it probably is going to make a difference, but I think I and many, many medical providers have real concerns about it. And I'm not talking about decriminalizing, I'm talking about making this recreational marijuana now legal. I mean, decriminalizing what has happened is one thing, but now making this, now this is going to be recreational. We have enough trouble with alcohol available to our kids, tobacco products, and vaping. This is just another group of drugs that I struggle to deceive. My ability is pushing this in the first place, but I think I don't understand.
No, I totally agree, yeah.
The work you do and what your committee is doing. You've got a lot of work to do, and anything you can do to support your efforts is.
Appreciate it, yeah. I would say that, yeah, no, just even from the direction of, from a medical professional, as you're like, any information, any voice that you have will carry weight, too, so it's not just a matter of one person or just a few people. I think especially coming from a school of teachers or, you know, those education professionals, I mean, there are very few professions that deal with children or adolescents of that age more frequently than they do, so, like I said, being the chemical health coordinator, THC is definitely something that I run into frequently, and we have a very close connection with Lakes Counseling Center because of the THC use, so it would definitely be something where the more we can limit it, the better it would be for our students.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Elliott, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move on, but we have a couple donations to announce. $500 to Rossman for unpaid lunch accounts from Shields. $210 custom card donation from Bell Bank. Then we'll move on to get a motion to accept the consent agenda. Second by Amy. Any further discussion? Not, all of the favors signified by Sanai.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Moving on to discussion items, I will announce first readings of the following policies. I will announce the first readings of the following policies. Number five thirty-three, the wellness nutrition policy of the school district. Five thirty-four, school meals policy. Five thirty-five, service animal in schools. Five forty-two, classroom supplies and materials. And that will be the first reading.
It's your chair.
Yes.
She's like, you're giving her an opportunity to do an NHS conduct.
Okay.
So we'd like to move your report, are you okay with that to part of the discussion?
Sure.
I know she missed her last one.
Yes. You can organize the session.
Sure. Okay, so we've had a great school year so far. There are only thirty days left in our first semester, so it's coming up fast. And we continue to do amazing things in our school. Just recently, we've done Turkey Bingo. Last week, we did that between every class and lunch. And we've also had awesome student sections at all of our events, including state volleyball. And overall, we've had a very positive vibe in the building every day, which is really enjoyable. So on November eleventh, our high school celebrated Veterans Day, which you all know about, and we had over fifty veterans from the area come in and speak to our students. This included veterans from all eras of service and dating all the way back to World War II, which was so cool to see. The Lake Region Veterans Color Guard also performed an official twenty-one gun salute at the high school, and it was so cool to see that as well. Our academy ambassadors are starting to do several events. For example, we have partnered with the Detroit Lakes Chamber and helped with Chamber Ambassador visits for new or existing businesses in town. And we also helped with events like our Veterans Day program, and we got to get to know our veterans a little more, which I thought was a very cool thing. So for the Fall Musical Shrek, it was very successful, and we were invited to perform at the Spotlight Showcase, like we said before, in June in Minneapolis for our efforts. So that will be very exciting and something to look forward to. And our fall sports were very successful, with the volleyball team claiming the consolation state championship. And our swimmers also had very good representation at the state meet last week. Winter sports are already underway with several games being played this week, including two basketball home games and a home gymnastics meet. So it's going to be very busy coming up here. And then lastly, tonight, we have National Honor Society induction ceremony at seven PM in the Lake Shrews Field House. So that's what's going on.
Lots, lots of ones.
How many did we need to add, do you know?
I have a list, but I have no clue. That's why I count it. It's quite a few.
Yeah, I saw the picture.
We haven't had it for the past couple of years because of COVID, so everyone's getting
Including yourself.
Including myself, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And your reports.
Thank you.
They're free to run up here. Appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a school board vacancy, so I'm going to announce the timelines for how long we're going to handle it. We will begin by accepting applications on November twenty-ninth. It will be either online or you can apply at the district office. We will close the application window on December twelfth, twenty-two. We will call a special board meeting on December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. At that date, we will announce an interim board member and a special election date. With the conclusion of that, we will place an interim board member beginning of, beginning of term will be on January ninth for an organizational meeting. That is the timeline. If there's any questions or anybody wants to apply, they can use, use our line or apply at the district office. That will be that. Now we'll move on to action items. A, a resolution adopting policy seven twenty-four, post-insurance deficit points. Adopting policy seven twenty-four, calls for a monopoly.
Jason, do you guys have any questions about it at all? It was pretty standard language sent to us from elders in regards to, actually, they had proposed it back in two thousand nineteen, and I just never finalized the process through it at that point. So pretty standard language that all districts incorporated and they're issuing any type of debt.
We'll move on to the second, by April. Any further discussion? Not all those favors signified by same eye?
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries. Construction change orders for the high school. Jason's orders, not much?
Nothing much. Most of them were sprinkler repairs in the media center. Actually, the only one was prefer sprinkler repairs in the media center due to some of the changes that happened in regards to the ceiling there between there and the science areas. Pretty minimal, again, hoping this is not going to be one of the last or if not the last one.
Getting there. Pay all the way, a colorful motion to approve.
Some.
R A. Seconded by Jennifer. Any further questions or discussion? Not all those favors signified by same eye?
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries. Okay. Item C, e-learning day plan. We will call on the elementary principals to.
Yeah, if you recall in our last meeting, you had recommended that the principals come forward to present her plan to the questions. First group is elementary and second group is secondary.
See if she didn't set you on the microphone.
Great, so before we begin, I'll explain just a little bit of what we did last year and then how we incorporated a few more pieces this year because we thought it was important to include all of our staff members. So as you know, we shared a bingo board, a choice board at the beginning of the school year. And then students were required to choose certain activities to do throughout the day, the school day at home when they were home during. It would be distance learning during snow day. And so what we did to tweak the plan if we go forward with it this year is to bring in all of our teachers, and that includes all of our interventionists as well as our specialists, teachers, FIA, music, et cetera. And they basically were assigned about twelve students, and so they would reach out to about twelve students that works out to be across the board, and they would reach out to them by phone during the snow day along with the choice board, just to see if they have any questions about what they're asked to do, if they need any support, and just basically do a check-in. How's it going? What are you doing today? And just, like I said, reach out for the academic support, but just the social, emotional support as well. We were excited about that because it includes all of our teachers. It's not just classroom teachers who are responsible. And when we divvied out teachers at both buildings, we really took a look at who do the students have a relationship with, and then subsequently paired the teachers with those students. So that would be something that would change this year just to provide another layer of
On the student and parent side of the e-learning day, some important components include that the parents and teachers do have access all day to teachers, their contact information, either via CSO, email, and ask for that help that they might need throughout the school day. And we'll be honest, our teachers also answer CSO emails after hours. And sometimes for an elementary student, it might not mean that they get their work done during a typical school day because parents are at home. So there's that understanding of flexibility with our staff as well. I don't know if that one email has not answered us, no day. Our parents and families are well responded to by our staff. So again, the CSO and bingo boards are shared either over CSO or the hard copies. We know that our parents sometimes prefer an electronic version. For attendance purposes, the e-learning activities must be completed and returned to school, and we set up a deadline that makes sense for families, that students have opportunity and opportunities to finish their learning work for that date to come as an intended day.
So along with this, we know it's important to survey our families to see where they're at, what their thoughts on it. We ran our survey at the elementary, in the elementary newsletters for two weeks, and this is our results, particularly at Roosevelt, we had forty-six respondents, fifty-eight point seven percent said that they were in favor, and forty-one point, I think that was us three, wasn't, were not in favor of the e-learning snow days.
So Trish and I actually ran the exact same survey with our population and asked the same questions, and very simply, were they in favor or not in favor, and then asked for some comments as well at Rossman. Hundred eighty-four responses to that survey, with seventy-five percent in favor of an e-learning snow day and forty-six percent not in favor.
We just wanted to share some comments from the surveys, both in support of e-learning and then obviously not in support of e-learning, just so you could see some of them. We have a list of all the comments, if that's something that you'd like to see as well.
The summary then for the data on the family survey, total between the two buildings across our elementary school, families that were surveyed, two hundred thirty responses, and one hundred and sixty-five of those responses were seventy-one point seven percent were in favor and sixty-five not in favor, twenty-eight point seven percent of the survey. Any questions?
I appreciate how you reached out to the parents, that was the key, I was looking for information.
This might have a little bit more to do with the role or the framework of what would actually happen during the day, too, so.
Yeah, it's important. Sorry.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, you can see those will be learning expectations up there. We did review these at our site council meetings earlier in the year, they're very valid and pretty important to us. Teachers posted by eight-thirty. Teachers posted on the platforms that they currently already use, which are Google Classroom and schools your kids are already used to have. And then teachers are available during instruction day to answer questions via those platforms as well as email. I give lots of emails on Monday. I go in, because sometimes kids are dropped off, so I go in, and I actually get a lot of emails from kids, and we actually have parents that come in that may have forgotten their homework or something like that, come give materials. And then the expectation with activities is that it's related and relevant to the current curriculum lesson plans, and that a product should be developed as well. It is asynchronous, short-term, there's not direct instruction, but the bathroom door you should put something out there to themselves instructing on video or directing up to another video or some sort of instruction. So there is, our expectation is that some instruction and a product is happening. And we additionally surveyed parents as well. And you see the preference for days, fifty-nine point four utilizing e-learning, fourteen point five would be a combination, twenty-seven point one working day for any time, and satisfaction levels you can see was there as well. So thirty percent neutral, twenty-two, and twenty-six, well, almost fifty percent had a positive satisfaction. So there was a lot of narrative that we put in there as well, and the gallant of very supportive to don't have them, and, you know, something to say, less work on the e-learning day. Interesting kind of conversation that was had by our site council following, was down to points as well. That is the middle school, very similar to the high school.
Yep. Doug, if you look at the high school, I think I have our survey results first. We asked the exact same questions, actually, as Mike did at the middle school. We have one hundred and twenty-nine of eight sixty-one, which is, you know, a good sample size based on the statistics and data. We had eighty-sixty-four percent would want to use an e-learning day or continue that. Twenty-five, or nineteen, excuse me, wanted to use traditional makeup days, and then another nineteen, you know, mixture of both. And if you go to the next one, I believe, this is our plan. I guess at our level, what I would say is this is our world. We know that most kids are going to leave us, and if they go to higher education, they're going to experience some type of hybrid or, or online mixture of learning at those levels, right? And so we've already been working on that. Even when we have, you know, lack of subs, for example, kids know that the learning doesn't stop. They still log into their classroom on Google Classroom or Schoolagie. They still have an assignment posted, and that's the big piece for us that I would say that our parents would report and that our staff would report, is that, you know, to us, an e-learning day like tomorrow, for example, is better than adding a day after Memorial Day because you're not really trading one-to-one, the experience piece, you know, with where you're at in the curriculum. So this is very similar to Mike's. We take attendance, stuff is posted by eight-thirty. People are available. Some teachers do choose to do an online lesson, and some people have a bunch of them already that they have recorded in the past. So that's, I think there's one more. And that was just our staff as well. We surveyed our staff, too. And we surveyed the PLC groups, that's why it says twelve responses, so that includes all of our staff, all those groups. And they're on board with that, I mean, they, like I said, it's kind of our world already.
Is there opportunity to make up work if a student can't access something for some reason, they become absent, but if they complete the work later, does that absence fall off? Or how would you envision that happening?
We have to take attendance that day for the state, so the absence wouldn't really be affected, but certainly the work they could make up, that's part of our plan, too. So if someone can't do it that day for whatever reason, you know, it's typically something where we're at, where we can keep going, not a huge sum of it or something like that.
So is the intention that all the, all the snow days would be e-learning days?
No, you recall last month, your recommendation was for use of only three days.
And the rest of makeup.
Yes, but our site council agreement as well was three.
What percent of our students don't have access to the e-learning? And that question can go to our elementary principals as well.
Less than ten percent.
And you got that confirmation.
We've done surveys of our, of our community.
So with the disaster from e-learning during the COVID time, is this a good idea?
We can still continue learning activities that are relevant for kids. They're doing things that continue their learning. They still have access to instruction, they still have access to their teachers, but you don't have to push days back, and you're still having kids engage in learning activities.
And also what we supposedly did during the e-learning virtual days?
That was long-term. That was long-term. This is short-term. They're back in class a day after, if they're interested.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that's something new differences we have. You know, during the pandemic, you have too many things going on, half the kids not here, half the kids here, half online, half of them not choosing to be there, and the follow-up is the huge piece. And so, you know, if this were like one or maybe two days on a huge storm, at least we're right back there and followed up. That's where I would say there's a huge difference. Plus, the part I mentioned, which is kids are going to experience this at some time, you know, when they get to the age, for sure.
Is there any other questions? Yeah. You set the plan? Motion made by Amy, seconded by April. The board will read the e-learning plan. Standing for further discussion. Not all of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
We will move on to item D. Thank you, guys. Resolution of Alpine Ski Club sponsorship between the Drake Lakes High School, Lake Park, Ottawa, and Paul. Motion made by Tom, second.
Second.
Seconded by Jennifer. All the, any further discussion? Motion from Rob, the grand old man. Although I'm all the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And Jason, for Alpine Ski Club sponsorship between Drake Lakes High School, Lake Park, Ottawa, and Pauli's High School and Morin High Schools. Motion.
I live in the middle.
And second.
And for Tom, seconded by Jennifer. Any further discussion?
Any comments from Rob?
No, it's just, it's a formality with, you got to dissolve the one before you can start the other. And basically, Morin wasn't quite ready and didn't get the stuff done in time last year. Both kids have been a part of this ski club for several years. It's two girls from Morin that are doing it. They just didn't, weren't ready to jump last year when we had to get the paperwork in.
Just out of curiosity, will, I assume, then practices can occur at the mountain?
Everything's here, yep. The transportation, they have to get here to go wherever we're going.
But from the other school?
Yes, unless we happen to be, you know, if we're going that way, where we can pick them up. But the schools we have, I believe.
Do you know how many kids that we have interested?
Oh, I got the numbers right here.
Yes, it may go.
I think there are 18, and nine of them are ours, or nine of them are ours, if I remember right off the top of my head.
There probably aren't multiple classes you gotta get by skiing, Alpine skiing, or like.
No. Just did the number this afternoon. Yeah, 18, six boys, 12 girls, and I believe nine of them are ours. Nine or 12, if I remember.
Anything else, Tom? Been a motion made and seconded to approve that application. All the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. And an out-of-state travel request for the bar national conference. Josh, what?
So basically what I'm asking to do is attend the national bar conference again. It occurs at the end of April, April 25th to the 27th. It's very likely that we will be presenting again. Last year, we were asked to present with some of the different things we do, our crazy booths or stuff, staff culture stuff. Our bar coach wants us to present again this year on the communication pieces we've added. So if that gets approved, it would be no cost to the district. If it doesn't get approved, then I would still want to go. I would just pay it my own way, and Kelly would call the normal TV request to the building. So the title of it this year is Leading with Culture. So any questions?
Any questions? Any comments for Morin?
I guess, you know, the first question was, and I asked Josh, like, where's the money? We've got MSBA coming up. It's, you know, it's always a feather in our cap, but we can send people to pick like this. You know, so I'm, it was kind of torn.
I think it was a good thing. Josh, what about you, in Calaway?
Would you know the approximate cost?
Red motion approved. Okay, been a motion made to approve by Tom, second.
Second.
Seconded by April. Any further discussion?
I'd love to hear a report.
Sure.
Good idea.
Do you do any recorded dance though?
No.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to administrative and board reports. Senior superintendent.
Sure. You've got the enrollment attached. We're rolling pretty steady, which is nice to see. We tend to fluctuate around this time of year, so that's good. We have the end of the semester coming up in January here at the high school. So that could be some transition after kids, so we're going to keep an eye on that. Otherwise, you know, things are moving along pretty nicely around the district. We've got, you know, I think you've heard from Annie. And I think the principals of all would agree that the vibe in the district or the feeling in the district is very positive. Kids are here, kids are working hard, staff are doing a nice job. So we're rolling through the next three weeks here till all of April. But overall, things are good. I did attend the Capitol a while back. As you know, I would have done a couple of highlights there. There's some concern with the state population just starting to decline. Your births, at some point the next year or two, your births would be lower than your deaths. And so that is obviously a concern for employment and it's a concern for enrollment and all those things, so we're going to keep an eye on that. And then there's a big push from, you know, people in our associations, you know, the educational associations who believe in special ed. And so that is a priority. We'll see what the legislation does. They're projecting a $10 to $12 million surplus, somewhere in that range. And so obviously, everybody's got a stake in it. So we'll see how it goes. It will be an interesting, you'll have some new representatives working for us. So looking forward to it.
That it, Mike? Thank you. Annie gave her reports. We'll move on to the finance committee.
All right, we met on November 17th at noon. It was myself, April Thomas, senior superintendent, Mark Jensen, and Jason Keen. We went over our fund balances review. We reviewed September and October receipts. Everything is trending as expected and wanted. We're finally kind of catching up. We were just a little bit delayed, so now we're going over October receipts. So Jason is very, very happy that everything is coming together with our new system. We reviewed our disbursements of hand payables from October, high school student activity account from October, middle school student activity October, regular claims through November. We recommended approval for that. I forgot receipts, my favorite part. Got some money coming in, okay? Forgot. Wow. Our taxes came in from Becker County at 2.7 million and Otter Tail at 42,000. Noteworthy. Let's see, our activities admissions, 25,700, so that's fantastic. And we're getting some of our SRA from 2022 back in the tune of around 400,000. And that's money that has already been spent that we are now recouping for COVID costs. Okay, now I can get back on track. Our other topics, our audit updates. The audit is slowing down. It's still in progress, but as Jason told us, they're just kind of going over things and they're calling the district, picking up pieces that they need to finish it up. Investment updates. We are trying to consolidate our funds just to make the ease of paperwork. And Jason's doing a fantastic job with that. Due to our Christmas holiday, we have an earlier board meeting. So we are going to have one check run instead of two, and I believe that's going to happen on December 19th. Our next meeting is going to be Thursday, December 15th. Does anyone have any questions? All right, that's my end.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Jennifer. Always appreciate your enthusiasm, once you know this. Okay, I can't match that. I'm up next on the arena commission. We had a meeting last week and met with BHH partners and City and all the other people involved over there. Got a, basically a rendition of a new field house attached to the other, you know, to the other sheets of ice and parking areas. And even this particular drawing was, was hooked up with the gymnastics building. It was really neat to see that, but it all comes down to further planning and what's really needed and so, and then also the Fairborn. We did have representation of them. Number one deal on everything is the parking to the south there. So we have, City would like to get a long-term agreement before they can move anything in. So basically, it was just a showing of the rendition that we draw. I'd say it looked very nice. Jason, you have any other thing to add?
No, I think just to reiterate, it's a part of multi, multi areas that the city is doing some, looking into in terms of Westside Drive Pavilion, kind of seeking feedback from the group they brought in for proposals. So this is just one piece of it. So it was interesting to see what that space could be used and revitalized for. But at the same time, you know, as John mentioned, there's a lot of moving parts they're going into. So I'd say it's far from the finish line.
So that's basically the arena commission report. Okay, upcoming events and activities. Transportation will meet on the 8th of December, 9:00 AM in the district office. Facilities will meet at the 13th, December 13th, at 8 o'clock in the district office. Ten for just to mention finance, December 15th, 4:00 PM in the district office. And our next regular board meeting will be December 19th at 5:00 here at M State 102101.
Josh, do you have an activity being scheduled lately for tomorrow at 8:00?
Okay. And we're, was that? All right, thanks for bringing that up. Anything else that needs to come before a meeting? That's what I call a motion due here. To look at Tom, seconded by April. All the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Meeting adjourned.